So this is the September 21st, 2021, meeting of the Easton Meadow Planning Board. Those in attendance are myself, Russell Denver, George Kingston, Peter Punderson, John Fantorsia, Cassandra Saraswello, and the Planning and Community Development Director Bethany Yao. I am required to ask or to inform the public that this meeting is being recorded by LCAT for viewership at a later date should someone wish to do so. And I'm required to ask if there is someone who is in the audience and might be recording this meeting. Would you please raise your Zoom hand so you can be recognized and be brought in? And let us know the method in which you are recording this meeting.
So we have one hand up, but I suspect that it's not because they're recording, but I can bring the person in.
Okay.
Actually, there are two. Think they're on the agenda, but I will let you ask. Promote the panelists. If you just clarify, this is only to see if they're recording.
Yep.
Thank you.
Marilyn. Marilyn Richards, are you in attendance and are you recording the meeting?
Hers is not one of the hands that's up.
Okay.
Let me try, do any?
So Marilyn, we are at the point in our agenda where we're asking people if they are recording the meeting. And if so, would you please state how they are recording this meeting?
I'm not recording.
Marilyn, did you have your hand up?
No, I didn't.
No, I didn't see you with your hand up, but all right, I'm sorry, I'm having a little confusion issue with the Zoom here in terms of with the hands up. I think we'll proceed, Russ.
Okay.
I can't see myself anymore.
So this, you guys are throwing me off. So the first item is to review and possibly approve the meeting minutes of our September 7th, 2021 meeting. Hopefully, everyone who was in attendance had an opportunity to review the meeting. Any questions, concerns, edits, suggestions by anyone? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve?
That's some move, George.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Mr. Torsia, first agenda item, please.
All right, first item, Sunnyside Plan Waivers Case SPRW 2021-41. Request for site plan review waiver for a home office at 49 Taylor Street. Assessor's parcel ID 26-117-8 in the residency zoning district. Applicant Gregory Lohar, 49 Taylor Street, East Long Meadow, MA.
So Mr. Lohar, as of now, we can't hear you or see you.
Okay.
Hi there.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay.
So tell us about what you plan to do at that location.
It's just gonna be a home office where I do my, pretty much my emailing and my quick books for my business that I have. Distribution business.
Are there any products stored at that location?
No, no, no products, nothing.
Okay, no commercial vehicles?
I will have a truck at my house, yes.
Okay, so just so you, there's a reminder that you are not able to have a commercial vehicle on your premises unless it's screened from view. So either garaged or screened from view.
Screened from view, okay. Okay.
So please make, please make note of that.
Yep.
Okay, it is something that the town does enforce. They enforce it through the building inspector, who is also the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
Okay.
Screened from view, okay, perfect.
Other questions or concerns from the board, anything they want to ask the petitioner?
You said a distribution business, what are you distributing?
It's gonna be a, I'm gonna be an independent route distributor for a bread company that distributes to grocery stores like Big Y, Stop &amp; Shop, Walmart, like that, yeah.
Okay, no other employees going to be coming to the location, just you?
No, it's just me.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the waiver?
That's some move, George.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Best of luck to you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your camera has shifted.
Yeah, you're aimed at your chair or something.
My camera, I can't get anything out of it at all.
We see, we see something. Right, tipping it up.
That should be, that should be exactly where I was before, right there.
Well, it's not.
Mr. Torsia, next item, please.
What are you, what are you looking at a little bit?
Some fabric.
I, yeah, I think.
How's that?
Move it, move the screen up perhaps, but all right. Item number two, case SPRW 21-42. Request for site plan review waiver for a home office at 74 Edmund Street. Assessor's parcel ID 16-91-0 in the residency zoning district. Applicant Jean Reynolds, 74 Edmund Street, East Long Meadow, MA.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi.
How are you? So tell us a little something about what you hope to do at that location.
I'm, I'm gonna be selling retail foods only out of my food truck. And so I just wanna do baked cookies.
Okay.
That's just about it. And any other foods will be prepared on a commissary kitchen.
So Bethany, is this fall under our new zoning?
I guess for cottage food.
Cottage food?
Yep, and just to clarify, like you said in your application, that no food will be sold on the premise.
No.
It's best for preparation.
And you mentioned a food truck, so where do you store your food truck?
It's screened in my backyard right now, but we were trying to get a location here in town.
Okay, so it's not, it's not, it's screened from view from the public?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. No, no employees come to the location?
No.
Any other questions or?
Yeah, what's the name, what's the name of your food truck?
Genie's Weenies.
What, what is the name of it?
Genie's Weenies.
Okay, hey, there I am.
Yes, there you are. All right, any other questions for the petitioner?
Are you, are you, are you a friend of my brother?
I believe I am.
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know if it was male or female, he just said that you were gonna be here. So I just wanted to wish you best of luck.
Thank you so much.
And you're gonna be selling, you're gonna be selling cookies?
Well, I'm gonna primarily be selling hot dogs.
Okay.
Okay, hence the genie's weenies.
Okay, okay. My volume's gone down for some reason. Now, where are you gonna be situated?
Well, the only location I have now is Treehouse Brewery up in Charlton. I would like to get a little closer, maybe even in town if I could, we'll see.
Steve, when my brother was asking me about this, I didn't, I didn't know if it was legal in the town to have a food truck. Bethany, is that the case that it is fine?
Sure now too, I don't know. So I'm gonna find out.
Yeah, our zoning bylaw doesn't explicitly have anything related to food trucks in it.
Okay.
Sort of a gray area.
Okay.
So does the board have to get involved with this at all?
Oh yes, I've been cleared with the board of health and the local fire department.
Okay, okay, cool.
Yep.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the waiver request?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, George.
Any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Best of luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Sure, take care. Next item, Mr. Torsia.
All right, item number three, case SPRW 2021-43. Request for site plan review waiver for Von Lee's Hair and Nail Salon at 613 GIS 611 North Main Street. Assessor's parcel ID 1A-56-94 in an existing structure in the business zoning district. Applicant Two Farm, 613 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, MA.
So we see your name up on the screen, but we don't see you and we can't hear you yet.
Yes, sir? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Oh, where is that? Let me see, is that there? You, why, why, I don't know, where is that here? Okay, you, you see me?
No.
There should be a little camera in the lower left corner.
Yeah, I see the little camera, but when I lit it on, they just say allows you accept your camera. But when I, I, I listen so good, you see me now? Sure?
No, we do not.
Oh my God. Can you give me one second, I add my fan very quick, okay? Can you hold on, give me a second? Sorry, I'm sorry.
So I think what I'd like to do is to, is just put you on hold and we will go to the next item while you try to figure out how to get a video. Is that okay? Oh, there she went. Okay. Is the board okay with that, or should we take a vote?
I, I have no objection to it.
I'm good with it.
Okay, good, all right. So John, can you call the next item, please?
Sure. So item, public hearings, item number four, case SP 2021-8. Joy Bowl Restaurant, request by applicant for special permit for a restaurant at 47 Maple Street. Assessor's parcel ID 27-16-0 in an existing structure located in the business zoning district. Applicant Joy Bowl CEO Vicky Leong, 229 Ramblewood Drive, Springfield, MA.
So I'm gonna need somebody to raise a hand here for this. If you are this person for this petition, if you would please raise your hand, Philip?
Yep, that's right.
Okay.
What the heck happened now?
Philip, we can't see you nor hear you.
Hello, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but we can't see you.
All right, see if I can fix that too. Share screen.
Over to the left, the very bottom left corner. Start video.
Is that working?
No, it's not.
Not seeing what the issue is here.
So there's, to the right of that little camera, there's a carrot. It gives you a menu.
Yes.
You select a camera on that menu, you better make sure that you're using, that you selected the camera that you are using, if it's in your laptop or computer or whatever.
Yeah, integrated camera, that's what it says. Yeah, I'm not seeing why that's not working. Is there someone else also here from there? I think the Realtor is also where this meeting as well. Should be on screen.
Yep, Brendan Greeley.
Brendan?
Yep.
All right.
Is he there?
Yes.
Mr. Greeley?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Greeley?
How we doing?
Philip is unable to access his camera.
Yeah, Philip, I just clicked the microphone and then you can click start video.
Well, for the, for the sake of people who are in the audience and also their petitioners, can you, can you kind of walk us through what the proposal is, please?
Yeah, so Joy Bowl is a existing restaurant with a number of locations. The proposed new location at 47 Maple is just over 2,000 square feet. The, the restaurant is largely takeout. And I know, I don't have the specifics with me, I know Phil does, regarding the number of parking spaces required for takeout and having an appropriate numbers, number of seats in the restaurant, which are very limited. And so it's a change of use from the Sunny Smart Convenience Store to the restaurant. And we have based the number of seats and, and with the consideration of takeout on the number of parking spaces that were previously allotted to Sunny Smart.
So Bethany, can you address the parking with the takeout? So we, we had a similar issue or two as it related to typical Sicilian and because we really had not had a quote takeout before. So can you address that?
I, yeah. So just looking at their site plan, required parking spaces are eight and they will have exactly eight.
Will, will, would those sites be on the side closest to Dunkin' Donuts? Are those the identified parking spots as opposed to being on D'Nardo's side?
Correct.
Yeah, and also what, what's important to note as well is that the applicant will be doing substantial construction on the building and relocating the front door to that corner with a walkway, which I believe is identified on the plan, a walkway that will be on the quote Dunkin' Donuts side.
So just so you, you'll know, Mr. Greeley, we're asking multiple questions even though we have the information. It's just so that people in the public who are unable to physically attend can, can get it just for what, for what's going on there.
Understood, we're happy to share.
So, so then what would be the appearance of the wall then on Maple Street?
That, so that, that, that whole wall will be, you know, the window will be redone. And I, I don't believe, I, I, to be honest, I don't know if there was some landscaping that was planned for the front, I believe there was, maybe. Unfortunately, I don't have the, I don't have the plan to share on my screen, so I apologize for that.
So Bethany, maybe you can let the public know what, whether there's landscaping along Maple Street?
Yes, there is landscaping. There should be a raised, a new raised walkway as well as a new storefront of glass.
Mr. Chairman, I have the plan right here, if you want to show it to the public.
If you, if you can, I think it just might be good because it's going to be in a very, very visible location.
Yeah.
And I, and I think we'd want as tasteful of an appearance as we possibly can along that stretch.
You could share that, John.
And what are the hours of operation going to be?
So I, I don't have unfortunately that information. I know we listed on the app, on the application. I apologize, I was, I was just really attending, not as a participant, but since I have knowledge of this. But, so the hours of operation, I can, I can relay from the architect who's just called me on the phone here. Apologize. Hey Phil, I'm on the, on the Zoom and a question has come up regarding the hours of operation. Yep. Yeah, do you know what that is? Eleven to nine?
Every day or five days a week or?
Is that every day?
And for the, for the people in the audience, we're, we're trying our very best to work, work our way through this for.
Do you want to try to get back in with the audio, because your audio was working?
Russ, I can bring, if you're willing to have him as just audio, I can bring Philip back in.
I, I'm willing to try whatever.
Okay.
Little exasperated that petitioners are not prepared with their technology to be able to come and address. They certainly have sufficient notice on all of this and other people are able to do so. I would suggest that if they want to come back in front of this planning board, that they make preparations to be available, both audio and visual, so. So.
I think we're back in on audio, correct?
Yep, you are, so are there other, so this is a public hearing, so before I open the public hearing, do other members of the planning board have questions for the representatives, Mr. Kingston?
Yeah, just, will they be, will they have a liquor license or not?
No. Not that I'm aware of.
No, they will not.
Let me just respond to the previous question about the front. Yes, we will be redoing the entrance. Entrance right now is not accessible, so as Brendan mentioned, there will be a new walkway constructed on the side of the building that will slope up to provide a handicap accessible entrance. The front of the building right now is all paved. And the zoning requires a 10-foot buffer strip at the front, so we're gonna be adding, removing the pavement to add that 10-foot buffer strip. And the remainder of that will be like a walkway, it will be slightly raised from where it is now because, because of the slope up. There'll be a couple steps up from the parking on the side. The other parking along the west property line will remain as is now. And there's one space that can be added toward the back of the building, which we would use for loading or parking. We, the first place on the left, on the southwest corner is gonna be designated as a handicap space. There's adequate space for that now, but it's not, it's not demarcated, so. I think the next two spaces, we considered whether we would mark them specifically for takeout customers. She doesn't expect to have that many diners, but there is room for approximately, you know, say somewhere between 16, 16 to 20 people. That would be, you know, one space per every three seats, so I think we're within that window. Then, you know, the other part of that would be the takeout customers, which is not specifically addressed in the zoning, but it's covered all by the fact the owner feels that they're not gonna have that many diners at any time. Their business is primarily takeout, so.
Thank you.
Those are the questions that you have thus far.
Thank you. So I'd like to open the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone in the audience who might want to be, to address the planning board on this specific petition, would you please raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting? Don, do you see anyone? Don?
All right, yeah, I do see, there's somebody coming in now.
Okay, thank you. Hello? You're muted. Oh, there you go.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I, I'm not sure if I'm on at the correct time. We are, my name's Siobhan Ireland, we are here regarding the site plan for St. Paul the Apostle Church.
No, you're too early.
Too early, okay, I'll unmute now.
Okay, thank you. Don, any other hands up?
No, sir.
Okay, so hearing that there's no other individuals wishing to discuss this item with the board. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none to close the public hearing by roll call, Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. So back to the board, any further questions?
Through the chair, just a quick question, is this the same Joy Bowl restaurant establishment? They have a location next to Hot Table in Springfield, is this the same brand?
Yes, it is. Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board?
I'd be glad, I'd be glad to see some shrubbery and a nice storefront with a window and a new door and some painting on the building. Personally, I think it's great.
Yeah, it's very nice, very tastefully done, yep. Do I have a motion?
A motion for what?
Make a motion to approve the special permit.
Any, any discussion, or do I have a second?
Second.
In discussion, do, do we wish to have, place any type of conditions on this, hours of operation, et cetera? No? Okay, so. Motion made and seconded to approve the special permit. Any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Ms. Saraswello?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Mr. King, or Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you. Thank you. Best of luck, and we look forward to you opening.
All right, thank you. I apologize for the video issue, so.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Torsa.
Hey, Russ, through the chair.
Yep.
Giant, can you turn up the volume or something? I can barely hear you.
Sure, let me. Yeah, let me try talking.
I've got. I've got mine up all the way here.
Yeah, let me uh, let me turn it up. Mr. Chairman, did you want to go back to item number four? Keep going down.
Is the petitioner available for item number four? And and do you have camera availability?
Or I'm sorry, I meant item number three.
Item three.
Hello?
Hi. There you are. Hey. Good.
Thank you for waiting. Thank. I'm sorry.
No, thank you. Thank you. And thanks for working on it and getting it taken care of. So it's obviously a brand new world out there. So. So we'd we'd like to know a little something about yourself, your your background and the type of business, hours of operation, what you plan to do there. So can we start with all those?
Yes, I just moved from California and two year ago. And in there I have my business the same like hair nail salon for 16 year over there. So I move here because I tried to have my daughter have a new light in here and good in school in Massachusetts. So that's why I looking for another visit for myself.
Okay.
So same job, everything the same.
All right, so hours of operation.
Uh, you mean it's the hair nail salon? Yes, we do. I do a ha- hand now.
No, what what hours would you be open to do that work?
Yes, I open six day a week and then about nine thirty to seven o'clock.
Okay. So Bethany, is this the Pride Plaza location?
The pride? What do you mean for the pride?
No, this is Dan V R X. Property.
Oh, on Shake the Road?
On North Main Street?
Yeah.
On North Main Street.
Yeah.
So there's a so next to the smoke shop?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. All right. Good to know. Okay. Questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I I'm glad we're getting somebody in there who's can have a legitimate business.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsa?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Best of luck to you. Congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Mr. Torsa, back on back on the proper order.
Yes, item number five. I changed up the the audio, so hopefully it should come in a little bit stronger. So. Case SP 2021 dash nine, Icura Asian House, request by applicant for special permit for a restaurant at 600 North Main Street. Assessors parcel ID 1A dash 93 dash 163 in an existing structure located in the Business Zoning District. Applicant Icura Asian House. WEI Management LLC, 86 Merrill Road, Springfield, MA.
So I see on the screen Mandy. And a Don McDonald.
Speaking.
Okay. So we can hear you, but we don't see you.
Okay, how's that?
That's good. There you go.
I'm here with with Week.
Okay. Great. Okay.
We nice here and myself is Don McDonald. I represent We. He's the proprietor of the restaurant.
Okay. So tell us about the project.
The project is basically, there's not too many changes. It's an existing building. You guys are familiar with it. I'm sure Patsy's Restaurant. It's a restaurant right now. There's restaurant and takeout and a liquor license there. There's going to the process, the prod, the proposal is to change the restaurant from a. It to Asian cuisine from from Italian restaurant. So there's going to be a new owner of the property, a new business owner, which are different. And new menu featuring Asian cuisine and a new sign proposal only to change the illuminated portion of the sign. So the sign is only going to change from Patsy's Restaurant to the Icura. Asian House, and we sent you a copy of of a one proposal for the sign plan. The the seating capacity, there's no changes to the structure, to the building layout, to anything else. There's it's just a change of. You know, a little bit of layout for Mr. We to Mr. Nye to make his Asian cuisine as opposed to the pizza and and Italian food.
Okay. So in real estate parlance, it's a move-in ready project.
That's correct.
Okay. Questions for Mr. McDonald's and the petitioner from from any board member?
Uh, will they? You still have the residential apartment upstairs and will that still be rented out?
That's correct.
Okay.
What are the hours of operation?
The hours are 11 a.m. to 10 p.m.
Seven days a week?
Monday through Sunday.
Okay.
Mr. Torsa, Ms. Sarah Swallow, any questions? Okay, Mr. Kingston?
Are you planning on any entertainment at the location, particularly outside?
Not really. There's not. There's not any plans for outside entertainment. There's not really a place for outside entertainment right now. It's outside. There's outside seating, which is in the front porch of the building, and that's existing, and we're proposing to utilize that as it is. So not, there's no entertainment. If they have entertainment, they would have to get, they would request a special permit for a special event.
Okay. All right. So this is a a public hearing, so I'd like to open it up to the public, see if anyone wishes to speak. On this matter, Mr. Mackey, do you see anyone in the audience who wants to speak?
I do not.
Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
By the second.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsa?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Any further discussion? Any further questions from the board for the petitioner or their representative? Hearing none. Do I I hear a motion?
Motion to approve. The new restaurant. Change your change your ownership in the restaurant.
Okay. Mr. Kingston, was that a second?
That's a second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none on the motion. Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsa?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. So the question we always have is, when will you open?
As soon as possible. We 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 still have to transfer the liquor license from the state. And once we get that done, we just do the property. Once we get that approved, we'll do a property transfer and be opening as soon as possible thereafter. So we'll time a couple of months probably, maybe three months, hopefully within two to three months.
All right. Best of luck to you. Thank you.
Where did Patsy's go?
Patsy's going into retirement.
Retired, huh?
I think he hasn't retired yet. He's got. He's keeping that place open. We he's kind of, he's obligated to keep that place going until we get in there so we can grab his customers.
Good. All right. All right.
Good luck.
Mr. Torsa, next item, please.
All right. Yes, item number, item number six, case site 2021 dash nine, 235 Dwight Road. Request for site plan review for an addition of approximately 3,275. Square feet to the existing Faith Formation Center Hall at 235 Dwight Road. Parcel ID 2 dash 29 dash zero on a plus or minus 235,761 square foot site in the Residence C Zoning District. Applicant St. Paul the Apostle Roman Catholic Church, 235 Dwight Road, Springfield, MA. Casella Design Associates LLC, 200 Shoemaker Lane, Agua. MA.
Mr. Casella, I I understand you're representing the petitioner?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Raymond Casella. I'm an architect for the Roman Catholic Diocese of Springfield, representing Bishop Byrne and Father Din Ha, who is. The pastor of St. Paul the Apostle Church. With me tonight is also my civil engineer, Gary Swanson, who can answer any civil engineering questions. What we are petitioning for is the social hall behind St. Paul the Apostle Church is asking to add approximately. 160 extra people to the space inside the social hall. What happens right now is when mass is over, part of the Catholic doctrine is to have fellowship. The fellowship space is too small for the parish. Luckily, we have a growing parish at this location. So what we're asking is to increase the size of our social hall. And what we're doing is taking the existing social hall that was built, I would say about 10 years ago, and we are adding about 41 feet of space. Moving the front wall out about 41 feet to increase the space within the social hall. So basically, we are staying on the exact same footprint of property. We are not touching any, we're not touching any buffers. We are not touching any zoning setbacks. We are not changing any utilities. What we're basically doing is increasing the size of the hall. That will require us to add two extra male bathrooms, two extra female bathrooms. But the sewer service on site is adequately sized to handle that. So there will be no change in any of the underground plumbing. There will be no change in the water or fire service, electrical, any other services. There will be no disturbance to Dwight Road, and there will be very little disturbance to the site. We're proud to say that this project is not only net zero, it's actually net positive. And by that, I mean we are reducing our impervious area on site. By actually removing paving that is unnecessary. So when we are done with this additional 3,000 square feet of addition, we will have less. Impervious area on site than we have now. So drainage wise, we are providing for less need. We are not changing any underground stormwater. We are actually reducing it. So there will be no surcharge to the town or to any catch basin on site. I hope that's a quick synopsis of what we're doing, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
So we are going to hear, I've decided we're going to hear from the public, but before we do hear from the public, are there questions from the board?
Has Tom Christensen looked at all this?
Tom Christensen has looked at this, and he has supplied a response back, and he had four questions. And I just wanted to respond to those, if I may. They're pretty simple, actually. The proposed grading, your site plan review requires two-foot contours. Our contour, we're changing things in the magnitude of a foot. We're doing so little site work that the numbers don't show up. I show them on the set that goes to the building inspector. Because it's much more detailed than the planning sector. We were told when we submitted, our original submission was so complicated with all of the grading numbers on it to simplify. So yes, we do have the grading plan with down to the one hundredth of an inch of, and I mean it, to the hundredth of an inch, every grade on site. It just was not in his original, but it is set. All utilities that he asks to be shown are shown on the plan, so he may just have omitted them. We are not modifying any of them, but they are all shown. Water, electric, Comcast, telephone, gas sewer is shown from the street to the building. The other question he had, was there any soils or sediment sedimentation controls? Yes, we have a detail sheet that was submitted that shows the sedimentation barriers. On the plan, we show a silt fence. That silt fence is really unnecessary because everybody is up gradient, but we put it there anyway, just as a a boot and suspenders. If you look at the grades, we're kind of in the bottom of the hole, so we're not sending any silt or water anywhere, but we put it anywhere. Anyway, excuse me. And he asked if there were details. There is a full detail sheet for site only, which was submitted, and it carries all of this site information from the type of stone that we use in our retention. All of that is on the sheet in the specifications. They go to the building department, have 100 and something pages of of additional information. That will be reviewed by the building inspector to make sure that it is all clear. And I would say, Gary, our our P E, have I missed anything that might help the the board?
That's supposed to complete the answer I've ever heard. Thank you very much, Mr. Casella.
You've said it all. I'm here to answer questions if somebody has them, but basically I'm a utilities engineer. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
I'm a utilities engineer. I work with Raymond. In fact, I did the original utilities and grading and stormwater and so forth. On the original project back about 10 years ago. So I'm familiar with the project. I attended. I inspected the site with Raymond not too long ago, just to make sure that everything worked regarding the. Sewering of the new bathrooms and so forth. Everything is in order. I'm satisfied with it, and I'll certainly answer any questions that anyone might have.
So any questions from the board? So, George.
Quick question. How does this impact the the number of parking spaces on the site? And do we still have adequate parking with this addition?
Yes, sir. Thank you for asking that, and I will try to talk a little slower. I have a problem speaking too quickly. We are required to have, I believe, 145 spaces. When we were done with this, we will have 155 spaces. We will have 10 surplus spaces. That includes all handicap spaces and all parking on site calculated as per the zoning rigs. And I would point out that the the impact on parking and traffic is is zero for this. This is a parish building. It's used for people that are from the church to the hall. If there's a wedding, it's parishioners. It's not open to the public. So they're not renting this to the public where others would be arriving. And just as you may request the numbers, we're talking about maybe 25 people, not cars. But 25 people Monday through Friday who use. Weekend, we may have 300 people, 350 people that utilize the church. That number is remaining the same and will not change.
So evening programming, Monday through Saturday, what what type of programming exists then?
Sure, there may be Catholic education CCD programs. There may be other programs that are part of the liturgy, but there may be a wedding. There may be other portions that are related to the liturgy. We are not allowed to rent this to the public for the general open. Use as a hall or for a basketball or things of that nature. So it would be church only and parishioners only. And that's part of the that's part of the agreement for the tax exempt status for the diocese, and that would not change. The main thrust of this is the CCD program, and the people, some of the people after mass cannot attend, so we have some people drifting outside. And we're our our hope is to be able to encompass more people inside. We did this building about 10 years ago, so you're seeing about a 10-year change. And we're, as I said, we're adding in the range of 160 spaces of people inside the hall.
So last evening I drove the property and noticed that there were three, maybe four pickup trucks with. You know, unattached plows that are certainly visible from Dwight Road. Who owns those? How come they're not screened? Tell me a little something about that.
Sure, I I can't say who owns those. I know those are part of the parish. Father Amha, who is on this Zoom, may want to comment on that. But if he has trucks that aren't supposed to be there, I'm positive he would be more than happy to move those trucks offsite.
Okay, and and as part of, and I'm just doing this for the public who might not be able to see the plans. So is there any additional landscaping associated with this addition?
No, we did not do any additional landscaping because we did not touch. There was a buffer that was required in the when the building was built, which we put in and is fantastically grown in right now. There we are not even, we are not even within the zoning setbacks. So as we weren't changing anything that was really visible other than the building. The the landscaping didn't step into part of the design at this point.
Okay, so I will allow individuals from the public who might want to say a few words on this. I just really need to stress, we've received a letter or two. Regarding apparently a conflict between neighbors and the church as it relates to. as it relates to the condition of trees, et cetera, and whatever. That is really not within the purview of the planning board. It's within the purview of tree warden. It's really kind of within the purview of a civil dispute between the property owner and the church. It's really not something that can be litigated here at the planning board. So I really wish that you would address concerns about the addition to this building when you address this board. So if you would like to be heard, please raise your Zoom hand, and Mr. Mackey can bring you into the meeting. And just Mr. Casella, while I have you, thank you for the petition. But I, you know, this is, I noticed many names, none, only three of which were in the immediate neighborhood of the church. And really, although it's nice to see that you have parishioners from East Long Meadow, this is such a real specific location that the rest of those names, although it's nice to have and it's nice to hear from them, the, the impact it might have on the board would probably be mitigated by, by that factor that it's such a small slice of, of East Long Meadow. So, so Ms. Ireland, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
It's all yours.
So we really won't get into the trees. I did write a letter.
Thank you.
Melissa D N E wrote a letter, but she had to pick up her son. And I know there was kind of an issue with the phone number, so another neighbor is trying to connect to. But my, my main concern right now would be, if, you know, if we're not getting into that with the neighborly side that I did bring up, you know, what, I would like to talk about the alcohol and the parties and the late-night weddings and the fact that this parish is growing so much. I'm, I am concerned with that. We all have kids. This is a residential neighborhood. And, you know, that's one of our huge concerns, and the traffic down our street is really tough. You know, and alcohol and traffic is not a good mix, so.
So can someone address hours of operation evenings? Mr. Casella?
I would say that the masses are usually in the morning during the week. So that's usually seven-thirty. Masses may go between seven-thirty and maybe nine, depending on father's schedules. And on the weekends, there is a morning mass. Afternoon masses are usually done five-thirty, six o'clock. If there's a gathering after, it may last an hour. If there is a wedding, and the weddings go longer, I believe they would go to whatever the limit of East Long Meadow zoning allows. I know they have the police department on site on most of those occasions. When this, when, when we met with the police chief, he did point out that he has officers that go when they, when they are required to be there. So I would say that their hours would always be within normal operating hours, and they would never go beyond. I believe eleven o'clock is your latest, and that's when all events would have to be closed or else they would be subject to the police closing them for it.
So Ireland, do you want to continue?
I just have a question about liquor licenses being allowed as well.
So, yeah, so the planning board does not handle liquor licenses. The liquor licenses are issued by town council, correct, Bethany?
Yep.
By the town council. So we would, you know, we would act on the actual physical location, but with respect to alcohol consumption and service, that is a function of the town council. Yep.
So, so if there is a wedding, you're saying that it would be, have to be closed by eleven o'clock, and the East Long Meadow Police would be the ones, that would be the ones that, that closes. I know that another neighbor has called about the late-night issues, and there was a question with Springfield and East Long Meadow because it is truly on the line.
Yeah, it really, it really is, as I was going through the zoning map and the property maps, it was very fascinating to see how that property is, is broken up. What, what was little, little history? So years and years and years ago, I was an initial member of Saint Paul's. And while it was being built, the masses were held at a place called the Blue Moon Cafe, which used to be Villa, or used to be Pasquale's
Okay.
on North Main Street, and while it was being built. So they kind of carved that area of Springfield out from Holy Name Parish, created Saint Paul's Parish, and then it was built. But yes, I agree, it is a very difficult boundary issue. But, you know, I would encourage you to call the police chief. He's very open and accessible. Express your concerns on what it is. And I'm sure, you know, if the police show up once or twice, or if Mr. Casella passes these concerns along to the appropriate parish individuals, they know that we are watching. They know that they might need to come back in front of a town board for another permit or, you know, issue. So they are going to have to maybe pay closer attention to those type of things.
And, and the maintenance of the property doesn't really reflect a neighborly way. If, if, I don't know if that, you know, the, the, the first time it's ever been cleaned up is just what the town owns and the city owns, and that was done on Labor Day weekend for the first time that any of the neighbors remember in, you know, a long time. And if you look, it was just cut down, and there's plenty of knit bottles, and it's a mess. It looks horrible. You know, it, it just really shows something about a neighborly way, and that's just, you know, it's, it's, it's become So that's why I was concerned. Just of how they've handled the property they have so far, how are they handling something new? And you're talking, you know, if there are weddings and drinking and got, you know, whatever else is going on. You know, that makes me concerned. I, this is a residential neighborhood.
Very valid points. Thank you.
Mr. Casella? If I may?
Yes.
So what you're hoping to accomplish is to accommodate more people in the facility hopefully lead to less people in the parking lot during a wedding event. Am I correct on that?
That and after mass, what usually ends up happening is the hall was undersized for the number of people that have grown from the existing church. So as they come out after, for go to fellowship, because of the building code, which nobody is wanting to violate, they are only allowed to have so many people inside the building, so some people have to leave, and it is somewhat detrimental to the mission of the church. So they were hoping to have more space for the people after mass. And also, Father brings in these portable barriers. They use them for CCD classes, and the number of students has fortunately grown. So they're, they're saying, gee, we're not able to have all of our children going to CCD. Wouldn't it be nice if we could increase the size of the space so they could obviously go at the same time as their parents are at mass or whatever? So they, so they actually utilize the space a little bit better for fellowship and for CCD afterward.
Okay, I understand that. But my point is, if there is a special event there, would that hall be utilized as a reception area?
Yes.
So a whole more people rather than going out and bothering Ms. Ireland and the neighbors?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I, I have a family friend that has had a negative.
Pete, I, I need to stop here because we're still in the public hearing.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
When, when we end the public hearing, I'll call, I'll come back to you.
Okay, but it would be my suggestion to Ms. Ireland that when and if things happen, that you contact the proper authorities immediately. And if you see trash there, let us know.
I was met with a no trespass sign about trying to pick up the, the tree that's like been sitting there for months. So I'm just trying not to get, you know, the neighborhood kids asked to pick it up, and Father told us no. It's, it's really been a sad way on a neighbor who lives on our street.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Don, do you see other hands?
Yeah, somebody's coming in.
Okay.
Actually, they're quite a few.
This is the person I was talking about.
Hello? Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Mr. Ponderson. Thank you for letting me in. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
All right, so I live on one sixty-nine Brayburn Road. I directly bought the parking lot
Yep.
at the Saint Paul's Church, and I've been there since two thousand thirteen. So I watched this project start from the very beginning and to what it is now. The initial, the initial project went off with a bunch of lies and a bunch of misleading information on what this hall was intention, was originally intended for. So let's digress back to twenty fourteen or whatever, when they built this building. This was for Sunday school, CCD parishioners. This is how it was posed to us neighbors in the beginning. Well, once the property was built, it now turned into a wedding venue, a concert venue, a event venue that I didn't think really was appropriate for the church. So I have a bunch of different concerns. My main concern is it's nice that it's being pitched to us as an expansion of Sunday school and CCD, and while I'm all for that, and more families, the better. I see that as being kind of a smoke and mirror to bigger events, later events, larger weddings, larger functions, larger things, because it can now hold an additional hundred and sixty people. You know, we've been dealing with noise complaints, and initially, we were very proactive in calling the police department, and they were very responsive. The town seemed to be responsive at first, and then, you know, you get sick of things, and so we stopped really bothering the church. And they continue about their parties and do their thing, and we just live with it. However, expanding this business, expanding this building to an additional hundred and sixty people just creates a problem that I see will, will just be bigger than what it was initially. And, you know, the whole, you know, there are no police officers, please. I don't want anyone mislead, being misled on this phone call. There are no police officers on site when wedding venues are taking place to either disperse the crowd or handle traffic. That, that is, that is incorrect. And also, on Sundays, there truly is not a mass of people hanging around outside of the building who can't have access to the building because of space. What I see is that this building gets built. It now houses an extra hundred and sixty people, which brings that many more cars to the area. And despite what I heard about the parking, I'll leave that as I'm not so sure. Because how are you going to take up forty plus forty by eighty roughly of that parking lot and not affect parking when we're already talking about a situation where there is not enough room to house the people that are already there? So we're eliminating parking for a building that is not big enough for people to house more people to only not be able to accommodate more parking. And these are just some of the things I see that goes on back there. It's build it now, and we'll just deal with the after bath later, and those are just a few of my concerns.
Thank you. Can I just ask you a question? So are, are you the house that has the dump truck parked in front of it every night?
Nope, that would be next door to me.
Okay.
Oh, I mean, it is not my dump truck. It is.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
You're, so, so I'm number one sixty-nine. So if you're at the corner where Father Ha lives, I'm his direct neighbor.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other individuals who would like to address the planning board on this issue?
Yes, you have four more.
Okay.
So far.
Hello, good evening. Thank you very much for the meeting, and I just, I associate in Saint Paul. And I just hear all of you talk about that. The first thing that I saw with the, like, the architect talk already, we want to expand the hall. It's not for ourselves, because for the CCD class and for the kids in the future. If you know that, now we had a twelve class in the Sunday, and we have more than two hundred students. You imagine that, how many students sit in the one room? So I would like to say that, so we just imagine. And the second is, you, the lady mentioned for the wedding, how many wedding we have in the year? You just count in the hand, four or three maximum. And that is like the architect, we do not go over in the town for limited. So I don't think so. And the second is the, you talk about in the tree. We are, we are, we have planned to cut the tree, but when the company to cut the tree come, your mother food, the food in the, the fan there so that the company cannot cut the tree. And now you sew in the, in the.
All right, no, no, we're not talking trees. No, no trees.
She mentioned that, okay. But I talked, you talk about environment. And now so that the diocote, remember, it's the property of the diocote. Saint Paul just running the church for the diocote of Springfield. So that you see jumping, and you know that they made sure that how long, how far you put the fan in our property. Okay, so you know that, so that is not our fault. You need to go correct yourself first, but I just bet you that because you expand, we expand the hall. It's not for ourselves, for our future of the students here. Because we have all the students, and you mentioned for the wedding, for anything, how many Thai wedding in the year? Just three or four only, and we not go over limit of the town. And for alcohol, you mentioned, we don't have any problem with the alcohol. You mentioned we cut, we link the rat in the row, a lot of parcel. We are not using that. We never drinking and drink and to the bottle in anywhere outside in the bucket lot, so you know who it is. We never, never, never to in here and run to the bucket lot or in the field and in the mountain and in the boot there and throw the block so that you need to, to need to correct that we are not doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, are there others wishing to be heard on this matter, Mr. Mackey?
Yes, sir.
Hi, can everyone see me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Mi Leng Chu. I am a parishioner of Saint Paul's. I wanted to jump on and support the expansion of the church. I was president of the Vietnamese youth group for the past ten years in two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen. And I can honestly say that the parish community, both the English-speaking parish and the Vietnamese-speaking parish has really grown, and we need a place for our children and adults and parents in our community to grow. Like everyone has said, there is daily programming, there's daily mass on Sunday, there's CCD, but there's youth group as well. We have approximately two hundred kids, and think about that. That's two hundred families in the city of Springfield and East Long Meadow that are benefiting and are off the streets. They're not using drugs. Like, this is an important, we need space to grow our programming. And as a city planning board, this is a positive environment for, for kids to grow and to learn, right? And to build friendships that last forever. Like, my friendships through the youth group has lasted me forever and is family to me. So it's really unfortunate that, that a few neighbor, neighbors have focused on tiny little details. If there's only three for weddings a year, how, but you can't disregard all the positive enrichment programs that has gone on. And they have nourished our families over the years, over the past twenty years. So I really want the planning board to consider the importance of this. And I'm a public health, I got my PhD in public health, and especially during COVID, we need space. We cannot be on top of each other, breathing down each other. There will be future infections, and if we don't have space for our children to learn, then, you know, like, there will be an outbreak. So I think from a public health standpoint, we need to expand. And I really, yeah, I, also, a lot of the folks that are speaking, this is impacting the Vietnamese community, and there's not a lot of representation now on the board on those who have spoken are mostly non-Vietnamese. We really need to, like, you all need to hear voices of people that have benefited from this, and so far, I have not seen that. And I don't know if there is language capacity, if there's any Vietnamese language interpretation or translation so that more residents from our community could come and speak in front of you. And that's as a city, that's really important services that you should provide.
Well, thank you for telling us what we should do.
Yeah, but I appreciate the time of listening.
Are there other individuals who wish to be heard on this matter?
Yes, there are.
People, let's focus on the building, not alcohol, not weddings, not trees. Those are issues associated through the police department, through civil court. We are a planning group. So from, you know, I'm gonna have a short leash if we get into things that are not related to the building. So I see a Mel D with a cat picture, but I don't see a person nor a voice.
You know what?
There we go. There we go.
Sorry, my phone is broken. I don't have a camera.
Okay.
Um, so I've been a resident on Admiral Street for over twenty, for over twenty years.
Okay.
The concern that I have is the high. Um, the concern that I have is the high volume of traffic that comes through. Um, you know, they come down North Main Street, cut through Admiral Street and go into the church and vice versa. All hours of the day and not just the church, but just traffic in general, because Admiral Street is a huge cut through which goes through Braburn. Um, and I can attest that being a resident of Admiral Street for over twenty years, I, I, I do know what goes on with the church. I've, I've walked over there several times. I'm, I know you don't want to hear it, but you know, I walked over there several times before they had the parish hall when they were having late night parties and have small children have asked them to, you know, please quiet it out. And the response that I received was, you know, you need to leave your trespassing. We're gonna call the police on you. So, you know, as a concerned parent, as my children have grown, you know, they've, they can't play in the front yard. They can't, you know, play basketball in the front yard. Um, the traffic is just, it's just, it's, it's, it's just a cut through. It's, it's a race down Admiral Street and Braburn Road every day. Admiral Street is very short and I can tell you from the corner of Dwight Road to the corner of Braburn Road, people hit about fifty miles plus an hour on the street.
So you, you've been a resident a long time. Can I ask you this question? So am I, I, I've been led to believe that at one time Admiral was a dead end. Was that correct?
I, I think it was way back in the day, um, when it first was built. Yes, it was. Um, fifty plus years ago. Yes. And then, um, this, the corner of Dwight Road and Admiral Street says private danger, uh, danger, private way.
Yeah.
And that's the Springfield section, the East Sun Meadow side of Admiral Street does not have anything. So with that being said, you know, the flow of the traffic, even just alone from the, um, building that they had for base date is just crazy. Check the trailers come down here. Kelly for debt comes down here with their huge trucks. You know, I mean, i- it's just, it's just insane. And I'm sure anybody that live, that's listening, you know, that is here on Braburn and or Admiral Street can truly tell you. You know, we would love to make this be a one-way street if this is going to be an issue with the church wanting more people there because it, it's very loud.
Yep.
They, they, they have no respect for their neighbors surrounding them with, with the noise ordinance. Um, it's, it's been an ongoing issue for years.
So, uh, um, I'm gonna ask Bethany Yao, who's the planning director. So, Bethany, please remind individuals who might be on this call, who is responsible for, uh, changing the traffic pattern on a street, like making it a one-way?
Um, usually that goes through the police department, sign up from the police department. Um, and then to actually change it, um, I'm guessing it would also go by the town manager as well as DPW.
Okay. And how do we, and how long would that typically take? I mean, what, what else do we have to get the competition? Do we just put in a, you know?
So I, I, I would suggest that you call the town manager's office. Speak to the town manager, tell her what you're interested in, and then that way you can get the specifics on what you need to do. So you're not wasting your time. Um, you know, if it's a petition, um, so forth and so on, but you'll hear directly from the individual responsible. So.
Okay. And, you know, everybody on Admiral Street, to my knowledge, most people had received a letter from the church. I myself never once received a letter stating, um, that we were having this expansion.
Okay.
Um, and I never even received a letter from the last time when they were actually building it. So I'm, I don't know why I'm not included in it. My name is definitely on the paper, but I've never received letters.
Thank you. So, uh, another individual who might be interested in speaking this matter? Remember, we're talking about the building. Anyone else done?
Yes, there's six or seven more.
So, so if, if you don't have something different, um, I'd like you to reconsider. Um, I think we've heard, you know, a number of concerns. Uh, we certainly will take them into consideration, although the majority of them unfortunately are not in the planning board's purview. But, uh, with that, Mr. Hartman?
Yes, I just want to say, uh, I got married in Saint Paul's Church eleven years ago. And I would have had my wedding reception in the hall, but it hadn't been built yet. I've been teaching CCD at Saint Paul's Church for over ten years. Uh, we have as, as, have had as many as eleven different classes. We start with the second grade on up through seniors. Um, the overflow is, we've got classes going on in the church and in the social hall. There's also three classrooms. When I am in the church trying to teach a class, I've got a very soft voice. Um, I'm a quadriplegic, so um, I have, I have some mobility issues as well. I lose my voice because it's an echo chamber. The kids are sitting on the floor to this day. So they sit on that kneeling portion of when you kneel down and they use the seat as a, the table. So having the social hall alleviated a lot of that problem. Um, so there you may, you, you may say that we don't need the room. But we would love to be able to get everybody out of that echo chamber, which is the church. It's, it's a place I cannot teach. I'd rather go into one of the tiny little, uh, uh, storage areas and, and teach a class. It's easier for me. Um, I've also organized a number of festivals over the year. Uh, they've been at Stick in North Hampton. I've done Caribbean American festivals. I did a Asian fusion festival. Early on, would be when we're trying to raise money, we had outdoor events. We got the proper permits. We got Springfield Police to do the traffic and we had Long Metal Police who are on the grounds. So we had to have separate, separate groupings. Yes, when you're playing music outside under a tent, it's very loud. We don't do that now because we've got the social hall. So I think some of the noise ordinance um, date back to those times. But again, we had proper people. We've got armed, not armed, I'm sorry, uniformed security on the grounds when our children are around. And if somebody said, you're trespassing, get off. I, I've never seen it. I've never.
We're not, we're not, we're not going there, Mr. Hartman. We're, we're done. We're, we're done with that.
So, um, I, I would just say that this is an important um, project to the entire community.
Thank you.
And I, I am sorry that some of the neighbors are bothered by uh, noise and traffic patterns. I just looked up from Main Street to that, that back road. I've been going there more than ten years. I never even knew that shortcut existed. I've always taken Dwight Road. And if people are coming for a wedding, they're using GPS and it's not gonna take them down a shortcut road.
Thank you.
You're not getting that traffic at night. Maybe you're getting it with some of the locals on Sunday.
Thank you. Next item or next individual, Mr.?
All right, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so yeah, um, I just want to reemphasize the importance of um, the, the expansion of this hall for our community and for the, not just our community, but with community outside of our church in general. Because, um, as, um, Miesom emphasized earlier and, um, and, uh, another CCD teacher has emphasized that we don't have no space here for our kids. Um, I, I'm wearing my uniform for our organization right now and our organization, our goals for our organization is to um, raise outstanding Catholics and outstanding, uh, citizens. And, um, so it's, it's tough to do that in an environment where, um, you, you, you can just hear everybody else's classes teaching because they're so close or they're so echoey or, um, it's just distracting and it's hard to get our point across to the kids and raise them in, in a, in a manner that they will grow up to be um, citizens that are contributing to society. Um, things that we, that we do here, um, we don't just teach them by, by lecture, but we also teach them by example too. So we, we need that space for activity. Um, and I also want to touch upon the, the traffic issue that, in that, um, we don't actually expect more traffic at all in that we are looking to house people we already have. So the traffic that is already, um, existing is just, is not gonna change.
Thank you.
Is there anything else I should touch on?
Great, thank you.
Give me one second. I can't hear you. Can you say that again?
I said, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we, are we near the end, Mr. Mackey?
Uh, so I have one more person who has not spoken.
Okay.
Uh, so I think I will do that.
Yes, thank you. Well, it's, unfortunately, the individual is unable to connect. So I think I'd like to kind of bring it back to the board. Um, Jonathan, to remind me, this was a public, required public hearing?
Uh, yes.
So do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that?
The only question I would have, um, is we saw a memo from DPW today uh, requesting additional information on the site plan. If we close the public hearing, we cannot accept additional information regarding the site plan. So, um, unless we're satisfied that DPW has been, in fact, satisfied with it, um, I would be cautious about closing the hearing.
Okay. And, and I guess the other thing I'd just like to raise is we certainly have heard, um, a fair amount, very consistent about uh, Admiral Street, specifically Admiral Street. Um, and I'd like to hear from DPW what could potentially be done to alleviate the traffic on Admiral Street before we do this. So as an example, I do know that there was an experiment on, I believe it, uh, off of Porter Road. Correct me if I'm right, uh, rural lane. I believe the, they tried something, uh, to alleviate some of the traffic. I've seen other things where they've made certain streets one way at certain times of the day or certain days. You know, as, as a possibility to try to alleviate that uh, traffic issue that we've heard from more than, more than, certainly more than a couple of people. And I think we kind of owe it to them to, to at least ask DPW to uh, weigh in on that issue as well. Um, how's the board feeling about both Mr. Kingston's and my recommendations?
I would agree with, I would agree with what both of you said. Um, just one other kind of quick thing I wanted to bring up. So I, I don't know if we need to do this, whether it would be necessary, but I think it would be important, judging upon some of the comments I heard and just the explanation of what's, you know, going on at the church. I know that these, you know, large events that might serve alcohol might only be a handful of times a year, but it would be important that we kind of set a very definitive time that, that those events end and that that's kind of enforced or agreed upon just so that we don't run this risk. Because to me, that was probably the, the one thing that I think should, we should make sure there's a lot of these other issues are civil issues and we don't really have a lot of jurisdiction on regulating that. But in terms of, you know, hours of operation and things like that, uh, that is sort of a little bit in our purview.
Bethany, go ahead.
Um, so this is a site plan review. Um, churches are not, are exempt from special permit, which is where the hours of operation would be set. Um, so they are under the general bylaws for the town and would have to operate under those, but we wouldn't be able to restrict them further.
I, I'm just reviewing the standards for review on site plan and the third one, uh, uh, the second one is convenience and safety of particular and pedestrian movement with it, within the site in relationship to adjoining ways and properties. And I think that comes under your point, Russ, of, uh, consulting with DPW about whether or not something can be done there. I, I would suggest that we send the motion to close and that we continue the hearing. If Mr. Punderson's willing to, um, rescind his motion, I would make a motion to continue the public hearing for the additional information we've been discussing.
You're muted, Pete. You're muted, Pete.
I will rescind my, um, offer to close the public hearing based on what, uh, Mr. Kingston and Mr. Denver said. I'm in complete agreeance with them. I would like to make one comment this time that the church is a church and I am all for better education about religion, whatever religion it may be to the people that are attending the church. I think it's fantastic. There have been several people, as we've seen, that have brought about issues that are real issues, whether it's the traffic, whether it's litter, whether it's on your prop or adjacent to your property. The church has to be a good neighbor in a, in a, in a regular residential neighborhood. So I know one of the people, I know Mr. Gressaro personally, and I know what he went through with the church. And I know that treatment was not really desirable that he received. So I would stress that the church be a good neighbor. And that all that are listening, if they see the church as not being a good neighbor, is to make it, make that information available to the town, to the planning board, to the police department, or whoever it may be. And we can act upon any further problems that the church may not directly cause, but inadvertently is causing in the neighborhood.
So just to keep this moving along, so Bethany, our next meeting is the first Tuesday in October?
October fifth.
Which is October fifth. So, um, Bethany, who is the planning director, will reach out to Public Works. She will, um, identify to the appropriate individuals within Public Works, the traffic issues that were raised, the traffic safety issues that were raised. Ask DPW what, to please take a look at it and what would be their recommendations based upon the comments from the neighbors. We continue this public hearing until October fifth at six o'clock. Um, so that we can either hear the report back from the Board of Public, or from the Public, Public Works Department or a representative of Public Works can be there. Um, so that we can try to find a happy medium where there could potentially be this expansion be allowed, but also alleviate the traffic and traffic safety issues that have been raised by, by the residents. And I think that would be the, um, the, the best course of business, uh, right now. So.
Hey man, would it be appropriate, uh, for me to make a couple of comments on this discussion? As the engineer for the applicant?
So, um, if they involves the, the traffic safety issues, I would ask that you hold them until the October fifth. Or, and, or if we receive a report back from Public Works prior to the meeting, Bethany can certainly share the report with Mr. Casella, who obviously will share that with you. And that way you would be able to respond to Board of Public Works comments, um, at the same time.
Well, the only comment I wanted to make was.
Well, I, I think, I think I just said what, what we were gonna do. So, uh, thank you though. Um, so.
I will make a motion to continue to October fifth at six PM.
All right, do we have a second? Mr. Punderson, you're muted. So seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Those in favor, uh, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for uh participating. We certainly have heard everything you said. Um, I, I will kind of repeat what Mr. Punderson said. There does appear to be a real disconnect between the neighbors and the church, whether believed or not, but there certainly does appear to be based upon representations. So um, hopefully, as we move forward, that rift can be rectified. So, thank you, everyone. Mr. Torsia, next item, please.
Yes, uh, item number seven, uh, case zone 2021-03, ground-mounted photovoltaic installations bylaw amendment for the purpose of amending and clarifying the Town of East Long Meadows zoning bylaws, section 7.5, ground-mounted photovoltaic installations and schedule of uses, section 3.041, ground-mounted photovoltaic arrays by adding language, permitting ground-mounted photovoltaic installations in resident zoning districts, petitioner East Long Meadow Planning Board.
So I will ask Bethany to kind of introduce this and we'll go from there.
Sure. So as we found out um, the hard way, um, we cannot restrict solar, ground-mounted solar, uh, solar arrays um, and exclude them from our residential zones. So this is taking another look at our solar bylaw and how we can introduce ground-mounted solar arrays to our residential zones while still respecting that it is a residential zone. Um, so what I've sent out to all of you is a working draft. Um, it incorporates recommendations from the Best Practices Guide that was published by um, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Um, a handful of our neighboring um municipalities in Western Massachusetts contributed to it. Um, it kind of just lays it out step by step, um, things you should consider. I don't know if the board has any initial thoughts or if you'd like to um, share those and then really dig in on October 5th, given the um, the time of the meeting at this moment.
So I, I, I'll give just my initial comments. One, um, was I correct in reading that you would not be able to have ground-mounted solar unless you had at least two acres of property?
That's a possible number. The numbers in there are um, well, pretty much everything in there is up to, up to the board to change as would fit East Long Meadows. Um, so I put those in more as placeholders than anything. There's a couple of different ways that you could regulate them in um, in uh residential zones. And one of them is by acreage. Um, another would be megawatts. So that's another conversation. I don't know which one the board feels more comfortable with.
Well, I, I, I guess before we were to vote on something like that, I'd like to know how many residential lots in town are two acres or more. And, and therefore, are we making it too restrictive and have the same issue we did with PLH? Uh, and speaking of PLH, so um, that was one court case in front of one land court judge. So I, you know, I don't know if we have to hang our hat on that. Um, um, so I just kind of throw that out there just as a potential legal argument. But George, I know you've been very active on solar. So do you want to add some comments?
Uh, none at this point. I, I need to take some more time to review it a little more depth. Um, I recognize the PLH issue and uh, I do think that acreage is, is important uh because that allows for more bufferage around the, the site. Um, I don't think we want this in everybody's backyard, but um, you know, there are large tracts in, that are zoned residential that are undeveloped. And uh, I think we all know a great, a great number of them. Um, so the potential, I don't think it's too limiting to say that uh, you, you can only have it uh, two acres. Two acres is not that big. Um, I, I would think that uh, that that's reasonable.
Okay. Do others on the planning board have initial comments? Because we will certainly be studying this for a few meetings.
Yeah, I, I haven't looked at it completely in full, but just as kind of an initial reaction to the two acres. I think that's uh, a pretty fair restriction. I don't think it would be too restrictive, but again, it would be really good to get that, that, that actual number of places where that would be available.
Pete, did you, did you want to raise an issue? Well, you're muted, Pete.
I did that because my wife came in and started the laundry while I was doing this. Um, you know, size, size of the, of the wattage or the voltage and size of land are two different things. But I, I think that they, you know, you, you can only have so much, so many arrays. It takes so many arrays to make, to make, you know, a megawatt of power. So I don't know if, if restricting it by size or by land makes any difference or if we can. I mean, do we know, do, do we know what we can do after the bad experience we had with the last one? I mean, what's, what's the stake going to say to us?
So in the Best Practices Guide, um, they do say that municipalities um, regulate it in different ways. And um, that's the, or it's measured in different ways. Um, and then it's defined as, um, it could be defined as project capacity in kilowatts or megawatts, solar panel area in square footage, project footprint, total proj- project footprint in square footage or acres. And then some municipalities also define it by type, meaning um, like uh, the rooftop uh, panels that we've seen on the parking lots, um, carports versus a rooftop on a building versus a ground-mounted. So there's, there's many different ways of defining it. Um, and whatever's the best fit for East Long Meadow is the one we can go with.
Well, can we define it in three different ways? Putting qual- uh, restrictions at the size of the land, the amount of megawatts or kilowatts that are produced? I mean, can, and, and also is it on top of a parking area or is it on, on the ground? And we, can we include all of that in? So it's, there's no, no loopholes and nothing that we've done wrong this time?
Potentially. So uh, on average, uh, a megawatt can cover four to five acres of land. So that helps give you just a scale.
Okay. But I think we should connect it all in a line so that as, as you go through the description, everything is covered. Like you said, you know, obviously a megawatt's a lot, you know? Just, just so that somebody doesn't have a, a 40 by 40 panel, movable panel in their backyard that's, you know, between them and their neighbor. Or I mean, I've got a large yard, I could put one of these things up. But I want to make sure that people can't put it up in places that it's, it's uh, it's bad for the public. I mean, that's, that was the original plan when we were on the planning board and wrote this bylaw, was to make it so that it's not obtrusive to neighbors. So all this has to be considered if we're going to rewrite this.
Yep. Sandra, do you have anything you want to add and some initial comments?
Sorry, I'm, I'm in like a break room area, so it's quite loud in my background.
I just want, go ahead.
Uh, I think that the acreage would probably be um, better like how both of them are saying because um, yeah, the, yeah, I feel like right now the acreage would make more sense, but maybe we should include both wordings because it would be um, potentially too limiting.
So if, if I'm correct, Jonathan, this is indeed a public hearing. So um, is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this matter? I'll open the public hearing.
This is Richards would like to come in.
Okay.
Marilyn?
There she is.
Hi, good evening, everyone. First of all, I've had the privilege of reviewing this three times. And each time I read it, I pick up something else. Um, I'm not here to tell you how to rewrite this bylaw. I think my first comment is, it's great that we have today's date um, cemented as the first date of the first publication. So this sort of puts future um, projects at bay until we decide what we're going to do. And then it goes back to this date for um, enforcement. That said, um, I know that the whole issue is residential zone and limiting it, not, you have to have at least two acres. I'm looking at it from the other end. What's the maximum number or size that we would encourage in a residential zone? We just got through the master plan and there was a great deal of emphasis on protecting our farmland. Um, most of our farmland, in fact, probably all of it is in the residential zone. And um, I hope that there's some way that we can put, establish some criteria within the residential zone to limit size, whether it's through a megawatts or acreage. Um, I'm not an expert at that either, but um, somehow put in some um, criteria to hopefully limit so that we don't see all of our farm land taken up as, as solar, solar properties. So, you know, I'm on the council, I'm also on the Planning Matters Subcommittee, so I'm sure I'm going to be looking at this for a long time. But I do feel that establishing today's date is the most important thing since our moratorium expires next month. So.
So Marilyn, were, were you also on the planning board with the initial uh, writing of the solar? No?
No, I was in the audience. But I, I, I knew of it, but I was in the audience.
Don, I, I don't see anyone else in the audience.
Nope.
So um, learning a little something from Mr. Kingston all these years. So um, I can bring it back to the board, but I would ask for a motion to continue this public hearing. So do I have a motion to continue this public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion to continue it to uh, October 6th.
Yeah. So, so Bethany, just what is our agenda look like on the 6th of October?
Um, right now, um, it's just the continued Dwight Road and um, and this public hearing. I suspect we'll have um, a few site plan waivers, but no other public hearings.
So can we, can we do the following? Can we actually set this public hearing for 6:30 that evening? And just set aside at least another half hour. Um, and I would appreciate it if people could take another look at this, uh, send comments to Bethany. I do think this is something that we will um, have in front of us for a while, um, as we kind of pick, pick it apart a little bit. Um, so we'll, we'll go from there. So uh-
I do, when you do read it, I do suggest reading it along with the Best Practices Guide since it's, it's closely related.
So on the motion to continue the public hearing by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
I'm unmuted, aye.
Thank you. Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
And I am a yes as well. So uh, John, that was our last agenda item. Is this the, the director's report?
Yeah, just director's report after this.
Um, so not much to report. There's a couple volunteer opportunities on Saturday through the Rec Department and the Department of Public Works for tree planting. And I believe the bicycle, um, the bicycle event as well. So if anybody's watching and would like to participate, um, you can follow up through the Rec Department or on the Facebook page.
So uh, if I could ask Bethany, so I would appreciate if in the morning, on behalf of the planning board, that you speak to Mr. Finney um, and whoever else is the appropriate individual as long and, and as well as the appropriate police individual?
Sure.
With, with respect to the concerns that we heard from the neighbors and Admiral Street. Um, I would hope that, I, I don't know, do you normally uh, report on our meetings to the town manager when things arise of concern?
Um, I, I think she usually watches most of them, um, but I certainly can do that.
So you might want to just let her know of the, the tone of the concerns on both sides. And um, you know, we, we heard one side said there were policemen there, another side saying there weren't policemen there, there were noise issues, they weren't addressed, you know, that, that type of thing. It would, it might be nice to, to actually hear from our police department the number of complaints that it's just been received, just so that if those questions are asked, then we'll, we'll have specific answers for, for people. But um, I think certainly people have had their say uh, on, on that matter. And we will hear from, from Public Works and hopefully close the public hearing and, and vote one way or the other. So.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, John?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up quickly, uh, both Bethany and the, uh, and Lori from the PVPC has been working very hard on our local rapid recovery project. We have a deadline coming up, October 8th. We've been meeting on a pretty regular basis. Uh, so I'm very happy to see the progress that we've been going forward with that. Um, and we should have some, I think, more information, I'm sure, in the next couple of weeks on that.
Great, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. For those in favor, Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I am definitely a yes. Everybody have a good evening.